Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on January 3rd, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivi- individual, all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. I know we have several people here to make comment. If you're here to make comment on the accessory dwelling unit item, I'll ask you to hold your comment until then. Anyone who'd like to make public comment on any other item on the agenda, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the podium. Seeing no one will close public comment number one and move to organization of the board. We have election of officers.
I would make a motion that we elect Supervisor Basil as Chairperson for calendar year 2023.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And next we have a set date and time of regular meetings.
No, no. I would make the motion that we approve Supervisor Merkin as Vice Chair for calendar year 2023.
I would second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Merkin.
We're getting off to a good start, aren't we? We're getting off to a great start.
Merkin. Aye. Okay. You guys do sure, right? You sure? Okay.
It's gonna be a good year.
It's gonna be a good year. Yes. Now we have setting the date and time for regular meetings.
Move that we set the dates, the regular meetings of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday morning at 10 o'clock.
And to modify if necessary?
Oh, sure. I'll accept that and to modify that as necessary.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And next we have definition of a limited agenda.
I move to define a limited agenda as follows. No public hearings, no additional items, no agency or departmental reports, no other reports, and the Chair has discretion to make any exceptions.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And thank you. I just want to say it was a really good year and learning experience for me last year, and I appreciate that you're both willing to let me sit in this chair again this year. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think it is one of those positions where you almost need more than a year to to understand what you're, what you're doing.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Okay, next we have bid opening for Sopers Mill Access Improvements. Good morning.
Morning.
Just gonna remind you to turn your mic on and speak directly into it, please.
Thank you.
We'll try to make this quick. I know you've got a lot on your plate here. So we are doing bid opening today for the McFar- or for, excuse me, for the Sopers Mill Launch Improvements. We received two bids. The first one is from Paulgrass Land Stewardship Company from Milwaukee. Bid bond is complete. Status form is complete. And bidder identity is complete.
First bid is 146,432,146,432, zero cents.
Okay, the next bid is from Construct Incorporated. Bid bond is complete. Bitter identity is complete. And bitter status form is complete.
Bid of 186,296,186,296.
And that is all the bids. We will go back, complete the bid tabulations, review the numbers, and then come back next week with a recommendation to award.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have no agency reports today. Next we have consideration of proclamation recognizing January 2023 as slavery and human trafficking prevention month in Story County. Supervisor Hens, would you like to start?
Sure. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with the inalienable right of freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal. And whereas slavery within the United States today is most often found in the form of forced labor and sex trafficking, which weakens our social fabric, increases violence and organized crime, and debases our humanity. And whereas this heinous crime is found within our own community. And whereas the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery has been working since 2005 to abolish all forms of human trafficking through education, volunteerism, advocacy, and collaboration. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by choosing products that are not made by forced labor, by working to protect our young people from sexual exploitation, by addressing the problems of internet sex trafficking and pornography, and becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. And.
Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as slavery and human trafficking prevention month and encourage all citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of its forms in our community. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-3737-888.
I move the adoption of the proclamation.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And would you like to step forward and say a few things? Just make sure you turn your microphone on. There you go.
Good morning, George Belitsa. I'm the statewide chairman of the Iowa Network Against Human Trafficking and Slavery. I want to thank the supervisors for calling attention to this growing crime in Iowa but across the globe. Before the pandemic, there were 40 million people enslaved in this world. And since the pandemic is almost over, we have new reports showing that that has grown to 50 million enslaved people. In the rest of the world, they call human traffic, what we call human trafficking, modern slavery. I'm on an international anti-slavery board, and there are representatives from five continents, and they all are reporting the same thing, a great increase in especially labor trafficking. Whereas here in this country, that's great increase especially in sex trafficking of minors in particular. One of the consequences of the pandemic is that kids were at home alone a lot and unsupervised or on, and on the internet. And there are estimated to be 500 million, no, 500,000 traffickers in the world today. At any given time, there's 200,000 traffickers on the internet trying to groom primarily young children, minors, and they're having a great deal of success. And it's a travesty, what's happening. The figures that we have for Iowa, I want to share with you because they've all gone up. When I started as Chair of the Network Against Human Trafficking, it was the the day that I officially retired from YSS. And at that time of the year before, and this goes back six years now, the number of victims that, and survivors that were receiving help for that whole year was 50. Now, it's over 600. These are people who have been rescued or have found their way to help. We, at that time, we had only two agencies that provided solely services for sex trafficking, sex trafficked women. No minors at that time had access to sex trafficking, solely sex trafficking services. YSS was the first to open up programs specifically for minors. So now we have nine agencies. And some of them, I hope, are here today. We've asked, we are very blessed in Story County. We have three agencies that provide trauma-informed care services to survivors, YSS, and primarily with the teenagers and those under 25. In fact, YSS is the only agency that has a federal grant to provide transitional living for up to two years solely to survivors of sex trafficking. There are eight beds and, and they are full. So the number now of has gone up to over 600 being served. More agencies are there. However, the numbers keep going up, and there's very little state funding for these programs, and we have asked the legislature for $5 million this next year for victim services, increased service to victim services, and we're hoping for that. I'm going to leave with you a list of legislative priorities that we have for the year ahead. The number one that I want to share with you is the Safe Harbor Bill. It passed the House unanimously. Well, there was one vote against it out of 98 voted in favor, wanting to oppose, got to the Senate and, and died there. This law is in effect in 30 states, and Iowa is one of the states that has yet to pass it. Chief Martinez, who is our Nevada chief, led an interim committee, and I want to thank him for his leadership, not an interim committee, but a work group that tried to put something together where we could get this passed in the Senate. The bill would say that any minor that is bound to have been trafficked would not be prosecuted for prostitution, wouldn't even be considered. They would get services rather than, you know, go into the judicial system. And it would include other minor crimes that they were forced to commit while being trafficked. So that law exists in, in sit 30 states. We couldn't get that done. You've heard of the Piper Jeffrey case that came up, 15-year-old girl, run, not a runaway, but yeah, run away from home, was homeless in Des Moines. She had been abused in her own family, had been adopted, was, did not feel she was being treated well by her adopted family, ran away from home, fell into homelessness and into being trafficked. She didn't profit from it. She was, it was what we used to call survival sex, where you get food and a place to live in exchange for abuse of your body. And she had, at age 15, she was sold for drugs to a man that had raped her five times before. After she had been raped again, she snapped and committed a horrible crime, stabbing this man to death. And she just spent two years in detention, locked up, and she then finally went to court and got a sentence of 20 years that, in prison, that was suspended, and, and, and she was given five years in a women's facility in Des Moines and wearing a, I think, an ankle bracelet to track her. And then she had some other requirements, regular drug testing and all of that. She was there for about two weeks and walked away. Was picked up, is in the Polk County Jail. And on January 18th, she will be before the judge who suspended her sentence, and she may go to prison for 20 years. A victim being victimized. And I'll just end with this about Piper and, and the way the public is responding to the case. They think that this case is wrong. Proof of that is one of her high school teachers put a GoFundMe. She was also ordered to pay $150,000 to the man's family who raped her as a minor at 15. And so he wanted to raise $150,000 through GoFundMe. There were nearly 16,000 people who donated, almost $600,000. That's all in a trust fund for her. So it far exceeded the 150,000 that she had to pay restitution. So I just want to conclude by saying, thank goodness the people of Iowa recognize the injustices that a lot of the survivors are going through. We need to change our system. We need to make a very big change in our attitude toward buyers of, of sex. And until we do that, we're gonna continue to see this problem grow. So we would really appreciate your support of the Safe Harbor Bill.
George, what's the number of that bill?
Yes, that bill was 25, was House filed, 25, 20. Okay, do you remember? Yeah.
Is it being introduced by someone this year?
We haven't found anyone to reintroduce it yet.
So this was last year's bill?
It's last year's bill, which died in the Senate. It'll be a different number and, because, you know, it can't be carried over.
Right.
George, I want to thank you for the work you're doing. It's amazing work. It's so important. I remember when I was back in corrections and we did a lot of work on child sexual abuse. And the one thing that I really remember from that is how predators know how to choose a victim. And they often prey on people who already, youngsters who already have problems and will not be looked at very sympathetically by folks. So I think that's really one of the reasons that this bill is necessary, because if they start looking at victims, person by person, they'll say, well, that kid kind of deserved that, or that kid was a bad kid, you know? All the things that the predators know that people will say if they choose the right victim. So I will be, I will support this in any way that I can. I think it's very important for victims. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for that support.
Yes, thank you. We're doing a picture. Yes, we are doing a picture.
Yes, and I'd like to call the agencies that are present, including law enforcement that are here today. We are blessed in Story County. We have three agencies, Wings of Refuge, Access, and YSS that are providing direct service. Want to come down?
Look here.
Up there?
No, we didn't. Yeah. We can do it. It seemed weird right from the beginning.
I know. I have to think really hard.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Way over. We did.
We did.
Did.
I moved to proclamation.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay, and looks like we'll have minutes next week. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
I'm just checking something. I move approval of consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
And we have public hearing items. Second consideration of ordinance 308, amending Chapter 85, general provisions and definitions, and Chapter 86, district requirements of the Story County Land Development Regulations. Story County Code of Ordinance for accessory dwelling units. Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Okay, so this is second consideration of an ordinance. I typically don't go through it again at these, but I'm happy to answer any questions because we publish in the newspaper before we bring these to you. State code does allow us to waive third consideration, and that is typically what we do on second consideration. But I'm happy to answer any questions. We did make the changes directed by the board, and those were brought to the auditor's office and what you see on the agenda.
Did you have, okay, right now, no. Did you have any questions? I just have one question, and if, if we could just walk through again, I'm really sorry.
No.
The reason for counting the basement.
So I think there's some confusion. The assessor's office, when they look at square footage of a building, breaks out unfinished basement spaces, living area spaces. That's not something that planning does. We don't require a permit to finish your basement. We consider the entire square footage under our ordinance of a structure to include basements and other spaces that aren't decks or patios. So we just have no tracking mechanism for if a basement is built and then finished later, tracking that.
Okay, okay.
And again, the basement is allowed. You can build a basement. It just would reduce your overall square footage you can have on the main floor, right? In that case, unless you did a partial basement or some other configuration.
Right. Okay, if we don't have anything else, we'll open public hearing.
That's fine.
Okay. So we will, we'll. Um so we will, we'll open the public hearing. We've got several folks here wanting to make comment. Just gonna take them in order they were given to me. If you could um step up to the podium and just make sure that the microphone is turned on before you start talking, that would be great. Um first comment, we have Dennis Upadall.
Uh good morning. Uh my name is Dennis Upadall. I live at twenty-nine eighty-three South Dakota.
Can you, can you, yeah, is it turned on? Or move it closer?
Too close, too far away. Okay, that better?
Oh, much better. Thank you.
I'm uh not a uh very, very good speaker, but uh anyway, I would like to stay in my place. Uh we live on uh, my wife and I, Linda, uh live on a acreage of twenty-nine eighty-three South Dakota. It's about uh um ten acres, uh pretty much square, nice brick on the bottom, kind of an ideal setting for us. Uh as we get older, uh we have lots of grandkids. We love to use property. Uh flooding hill, I raised a few calves from uh weaning to uh feeder calves in the fall. Uh mainly, we just have a big yard that the kids enjoy playing in uh baseball, uh go-karts, everything like that. Um and one of these days, um I would like to have a house set up in the back probably. Um and there's a couple of restrictions that I would uh certainly argue with, uh and that would be the limit of two hundred feet from the main house. Uh in our particular situation, I know everybody's different. But in ours, uh we would probably be three or four hundred feet uh to kind of edge of a hill. Uh a nice trick on the bottom, view scenery, all that kind of thing. Um and also the twelve hundred feet. Um and I'm not sure what the reason for the twelve hundred feet uh really is. I mean, the twelve hundred foot footprint uh might be fine, but a full basement, uh you know, I would think in our case, we'd probably have a uh our setting, we could have a walkout basement, you know, maybe part of it finished. Uh certainly tornado shelter, you know, safety, all that type of thing. Um and I guess I would just oppose uh those restrictions. Uh you know, certainly that anything would be built, you know, would be built to the county requirements. Um and um you know, at this time, I don't have any definite plans, but you know, as I get older and you know, my son would very possibly take over, you know, the main house, you know, whether he bought it or we still owned it or whatever. Uh you know, I would like to stay there. Our house is a split level stairs and getting old and all that kind of thing. Uh but uh anyway, I guess I would just oppose those two main things there and think anything we did would of course be to you know, county uh building regulations. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh next we have Lisa Danielson.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I, okay. Um Des Moines, oh, sorry, Lysel Danielson, two-nine-eight-one, South Dakota Avenue. So Des Moines is encouraging accessory dwellings with tax abatements. In my research, I have found that jurisdictions are expanding flexibility for these dwellings, not limiting them. In fact, as of twenty-twenty-one, I found last night, King County and Snohomish County in Washington State do not count the basement towards the square footage. They have, I mean, I'm not sure which is which, which one has a thousand square feet, one has twelve hundred square feet, and they do not count the basement towards that. Okay? I read through the variance or variance process and ordinance and from my interpretation, it doesn't sound like very many people would qualify for that. I looked all over Story County on the Beacon website and zoomed in on different properties. Some are long and narrow and some houses are tucked into the corner of the property. And some are very centrally located but surrounded by outbuildings or gardens or groves of trees. You can see just by looking at them where a second home would best be located. Many of these would not be within two hundred feet. If you were investing in a second home on your property, you would want it to be in the most desirable location. But staff stated in the December twentieth meeting that variances would not be granted based on desirability, but rather an impossibility to place the home within two hundred feet. This leads me to the variance ordinance under number four A two. However, you're supposed to read them. The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstance circumstances and not to general conditions in the neighborhood, which reflect the unreasonableness of the ordinance itself. I would argue that this ordinance as written is unreasonable and will create an unnecessary burden on the landowner. I have said I am a lot split present is presented. It is for family members. And many examples the staff gave on December twentieth from those people interested in doing an ADU are for their family members, mothers, fathers, children. This is the only alternative for people that cannot split their lots, so giving some flexibility in sizing is important. Everyone has a different story and a different reason for wanting to add a second dwelling to their property. I don't think families should be excluded because of size limitations. I can tell you that twelve hundred square feet in addition to a basement is doable because I lived it back George Belisso as my neighbor. So I was discussing this ordinance with a friend from my old neighborhood who lives in a similar sized home with her husband and three kids, and she said she couldn't imagine going any smaller. I would ask that you allow for a footprint of twelve hundred square feet and don't count a basement towards the square footage. Housing goal number three of the C two C states that housing is planned for, designed and built in a way that responds to residents' needs and reflects their voices and experiences. Please hear our voices.
Thank you. Thank you. Next we have Alex Christiansen.
Hi, Alex Christiansen, twenty-nine eighty-four, South Dakota Avenue. I would prefer this ordinance to be much more in line with neighboring Boone County, which has no size limitations, so each person can tailor a home to their specific needs. If Story County is set on limiting the size, then I would at least encourage you to use the livable footprint of the house rather than total square footage. Allowing a basement would not increase the footprint of the home while making homes much safer, more efficient, and usable for more people, especially those of us with children. To touch on the safety aspect, in August twenty-twenty, when the duration hit, my wife was home alone with our two daughters. One was three years old and one was only two months old. She was able to seek shelter in our basement. I have video outside our home of huge tree limbs falling on the front steps of our home crushing a couple of my children's toys on the way down. Imagine my wife having to carry my two young daughters out of the house to a nearby storm shelter with branches falling all around. Now imagine that same storm happens at night in the dark. In addition to being incredibly practical, basements save lives. And I understand you could say, well, maybe there's an option or way to have a storm shelter under your house, but at that point, why not just allow a basement? To have a basement in the current proposal, your main level could only be a maximum of five hundred and fifty square feet after accounting for the stairs. That is not very practical. I want everyone to think of their current homes. How many of them are that small? Think of having to shrink your house down to that size and imagine how usable your home would then feel. It was mentioned at a previous meeting by Supervisor Faisal, that basements are godsend for those with children, and I couldn't agree more. If you are set on having more restrictions than Boone County's accessory dwelling ordinance, please at least compromise by using livable footprint rather than total square footage. Otherwise, this ordinance will not meet the needs or desires of most rural county residents. Lastly, please remove the requirement that the home be placed within two hundred feet of the primary dwelling. Of all the counties in Iowa we checked with, not one had this requirement. County staff uses distance outbuildings typically are from the main residence to determine the two hundred feet. By this rationale, they would be expecting you to put the second home between the first house and the outbuildings. That doesn't make sense. The homeowner who is likely making the largest investment of their life should have the flexibility to place their home in the best possible location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Nicholas Upadall.
Hi there, uh Nicholas Upadall, two-nine-eight-three, South Dakota Avenue. Uh you shared from my father, Dennis, just a minute ago. Um so I would be in the situation where looking to move back to my parents' property in order to help them out with uh general upkeep and maintenance to allow them to keep that uh property in the family that our whole family really loves. Um so I also disagree with the uh location size restraints. Um the locations uh as far as the two hundred feet uh being impossible to build in, a lot of times that's not necessarily just impossible, but you know, like we said, unfavorable. Um I would ask to look at uh not impacting agricultural lands. I understand that's what the two hundred feet requirement is for. Uh not taking away from farmland, but like my dad said, we have just a really big yard. And for us, that would take away from no grass. Um and as far as uh looking at their study, uh they said they had an intern look at the accessory buildings through aerial imagery and get those uh the sizes of those buildings. Uh I'm currently pursuing a master's degree in geographic information science, so doing a lot with satellite and aerial imagery. And I can tell you that you certainly cannot tell from aerial imagery whether or not a building has a basement. And uh basements, uh as Vargman said, are very crucial and important in housing. And they don't have minimal uh impact on looking at the outside of the house, you know, to tell whether or not it has a basement. It's really just a matter of usable living space. Um yeah, with little to no change to the outside of the house and certainly no change to the aerial view of the house. Um so I would ask that you reconsider the two hundred uh feet proximity limit and also whether or not a basement would be included in the size of living space. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Phil Isavely.
Good morning, uh Phil Isavely, thirty-one oh eight, South Dakota Avenue. Um I've got two basic issues. Um the first one is um the concern for the twelve hundred square feet uh and the inclusion of a of the basement. I kind of question that um from a design standpoint, what or how would a crawl space be considered? Most buildings that are slab-on-grade, which if you wanted to do twelve hundred square feet, that's what you would do, but then you have your utilities, your um heating, heating ducts, plumbing, sewer lines and so forth, and they can be anywhere from two foot to four, five feet as far as that's concerned. Would that be considered a basement? That's my question. Um and the other, so those are the, basically the two things. I'd like to know how a crawl space would be counted if it would be at all. The other issue that I have is a more general issue. Um and as was stated earlier by the planner, um this notice goes out in the newspaper. Um I think we all know that newspapers are not uh the mode of most communications in our today. Most of the communications are electronic in some form, whether it be Facebook or whatever. Um the suggestion or uh on the issue of the accessory dwellings, um this is not just an area around Ames or something like that. This is the entire county. Uh we have small villages or towns, Kelly, Zearing, Colo, so on, that outside of their area, residents there in the county may want to um have an accessory dwelling for whatever reason it might be. And the present system of communicating these issues, whether it's this or the urban fringe plan or whatever, um that affect certainly the whole county, I don't feel is being communicated properly. I'm really concerned that basically it's the same group that sat here when we talked about the urban fringe. What about the residents that live up and around the Zearing area? Do they not care? I just think that they don't know. What I would suggest is that um the communication be more email and maybe US Postal sent sent out at the proper time, but via email, the one method that could be used is to have a list of the forty-eight um trustees in the county and have those individuals send an email notice that there's going to be this or that ordinance or whatever come up. Then it becomes the responsibility of those trustees who are elected by the people in the township to get the communication out to them. I think that's a little more efficient and we're only talking about forty-eight people. We're not talking about several thousand. So it, and and those should be fairly easy to get, at least in my opinion, and it wouldn't be very costly. Anyway, that would be my suggestion and um thank you for your time.
Thanks, Phil. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on Zoom or in the gallery? Okay, so we will close the public hearing. Thoughts, questions?
Oh, my web question, sorry, would be uh how would the crawl space be? Yeah, you, I mean, you can't finish that into living area, so no, it's not counted towards the square footage. Again, it's it's a four, typically four feet in height.
Okay.
I mean, we, I think we would take a permit if you were going to lift up a house and dig out a basement under the crawl space. So then again, we'd be tracking that conversion if you did want to put a basement in in the future.
And then just, just to address the basement question again, the reason we're including basement is not to necessarily limit the footprint size or anything like that. It's not that you can't, can or can't see it from the aerial views. It's more so that you can track total square foot and
Yeah.
outside of that, it's not.
Yep, so I think there's two parts to that. If we have a limit of twelve hundred square feet on an ADU and we do not take permits to finish basements, then someone finishes their basement and it's twenty-four hundred square feet and it's illegal, non-conforming with our code, and they have to undo that work if it comes to our attention. So it's not setting it, it's not setting someone up for hmm, it it could be problematic if a basement was finished in an ADU and then they exceed the size limit in the future.
So if we did not include the basement square footage
Then.
and they, and they have a basement and then they finish it without getting a permit, is that what you're saying? That then it's not conforming?
Right, exactly.
Which would be a problem later for them later and very expensive.
And again, we don't require permits for finishing basement spaces.
Do or don't?
Do not.
Okay, if, but if the ordinance said footprint that the square footage was limited to twenty-four hundred with that excluded a basement, I'm not tracking very well.
Twelve hundred, and right, yeah, yeah.
But why?
We wouldn't, if someone called, for instance, we'd say, you know, we don't take a permit for finishing basements, but again, you're limited to twelve hundred square feet living space for an ADU. But somebody might not call. But I think the other piece of that that you started to touch on, um you know, most ADUs that we've seen requests for aren't typical stick-built dwellings that have basements. They're manufactured homes
Mm-hmm.
or conversions of pole barns. Um that's a pretty popular request. And so how do we balance um the square footage restriction that we have with a manufactured home or converted pole barn space when those folks are limited to twelve hundred square feet and then we have other, we have an allowance for if you do a stick-built home, which is more expensive, um allowing a finished basement or a basement in that home. I just want to make sure the ordinance is you know, fair across those variety of housing types that we might see as well.
Mm-hmm, I, yeah, I, I, I understand what you're I understand what you're saying there. Um I just want to counter with the thought that it It would, I would be concerned about equity if it was limiting. The size of or or if it was limiting the conversion of a pole barn. Or limiting the size of a um of a more affordable home. But it but it isn't doing that. It's just if you if I'm gonna convert a pole barn that doesn't have a basement. It it's not impacted by someone else building a stick-built house.
I'm trying to think about what is the purpose of the twelve hundred square feet? And in my mind, it's that we're not using. It's to, how do I say it? It's to keep a rural, keep the rural nature intact, you know, of the area. Not end up being something that has huge houses on it, maybe has rental units, whatever. The basement in my mind doesn't get, doesn't. Cause a problem with that.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's what you see, you know, it's above the ground, what's the footprint? But I'm not as concerned about there being a basement under one of these structures. But unless I'm missing something in terms of what the purpose is.
No, I'm just trying to prevent a a staff headache in the future.
Right, and because you don't track basements.
Right.
And and so because they don't track basement sizes or finishes.
Mm-hmm.
They look at the total square foot, s- square feet in the in the structure.
But I don't see that as.
Yeah, I I get what you're saying. I also, I understand that you can't see the square footage, that kind of thing. But again, it's just an issue of if they're converted to finished living space in the future. And we're not tracking that and then they're out of compliance with the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
That could be an issue.
Right.
That's why they count.
So they'd be, excuse me, so how would they be out of compliance with the ordinance?
Because the ordinance would say, you know, maximum size of twelve hundred square feet. This does not exclude, this does, this does not include unfinished basements. Is I think what you're asking. And then they'd finish the basement and then they've got a twenty four hundred square foot ADU.
Or could not say it doesn't include a finished basement?
Then it that'd be a twenty four hundred square foot ADU, yeah. It's just large, but yeah.
Could it say twelve hundred square, could it say above ground?
Above ground, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And then then it doesn't matter if they finish the basement or not?
Yeah, you could go that way. It's just a, you know, when we wrote this initially, the other piece was the intent really isn't to create more separate, single-family homes. And so we just wanted to be in line with that original intent too.
Right, right.
Remind me, is this a, this is a single-family dwelling? Correct?
It's, no, that I I guess it is. It's an accessory structure to an existing, single-family dwelling. And so that we wanted to in make sure that one, it's typically going to be smaller than the single-family dwelling. And it's just providing some flexibility for the family that's living in that dwelling to provide or receive care from someone in the accessory dwelling unit. Or even rent out a small unit on their property or use it for a farmhand.
Mm-hmm. My other, my other thought is. Um do we, while trying to preserve the rural character? Um and and prevent more farmland from being consumed? Does this? This setting all of those restrictions. It kind of backfire on us. Does it force people to move farther out when they could build on land that they already have? Does that make sense? No. Don't we want people building closer together?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So.
There's no doubt that this helps with density, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Doubt it helps with density.
Right, uh-huh, the two hundred feet.
No, just having it on a lot, it's an already established lot, it's residential.
Right.
It does not have agricultural use.
Right.
And.
But are we restricting it to a point that people are just not going to want to build?
Well, or that, or if I caught you correctly, would it force people to say, you know, I'm not going to build on that particular land? I'm gonna look elsewhere and maybe build a bigger home.
Mm-hmm.
Gonna have to go buy some farmland.
Well, right, right, right.
And build houses on it.
Um but that may be. An alternative that folks may look at.
Well, I have some real sympathy on this because um I was able to keep my mother on her farm for seventeen years. And that was because I had basically a lot of farmland, but we also had a lot of land that was not in agricultural use. We were able to separate farmstead, keeping her her house on that. And on the remainder of the lawn, of the yard, basically, we were able to build another house. We had to do a separate lot, we had to go through a whole lot of stuff to do it. But it helped us keep her in her home for seventeen more years. So I'm very sympathetic to that. We were lucky where our outbuildings were. We took one out and replaced it with a farm. But I can see how people could be in a situation where an out-outbuildings just don't allow for a house within two hundred feet. I'm not sure in my mind, the two hundred feet gains us a lot in terms of, you know, rural area and keeping the rural nature. I'm not sure that um not allowing somebody to finish a basement or getting that over the the square footage then. That that is a problem. I guess I'm. I think it may be doing things differently than than your department is used to doing them. And and but I I think it's worth considering that. Whether we can have that flexibility. I don't wanna see, what I don't wanna see is something that opens, opens up those areas for lots of rentals. For commercial rental, real, you know, res- commercial, you know, whatever. And I think that's why you've put some of the things in there that you're trying to keep that from happening. But I'm wondering if there aren't other ways to keep that from happening and maintaining that rural nature. But still allow a little more flexibility. Because I can see where, you know, where a family may want to go, you know, live next to mom and dad. And help keep them there, but they've got a growing family of their own and twelve hundred square feet ain't gonna do it. I can understand that. And we can say, well, they could switch homes, maybe the accessory unit can become the parents' home. But maybe the other home isn't that big, you know, we're 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 maybe trying to make it. I I think there's gotta be a better way to keep the rural nature and allow more flexibility in the type of structure and where you can put it on a lot. And and I I I don't know that I have the answer right now, but I do understand the problem very well.
If I recall from our la- was it last week's meeting that we had, seems like a whole year ago. No pun intended. You said with the two hundred square feet that if the land wasn't kind of appropriate for. Be applied for as well?
Mm-hmm.
Am I am I recalling that correctly?
Mm-hmm, yes, so um you know, things like having an accessory building. In a location or having a a windbreak, though, don't make you el- don't. You wouldn't probably be out meeting the criteria to get a variance because of those issues. Because you could convert the accessory building, you could remove it, you could remove the trees, right? Good variance requests are typically based on topography. So for instance, and this is the opposite issue, I think, of what we'd see with ADUs. You've got a lot with a really steep set um drop-off down to a ravine. And we need to vary the front setback so you can build closer to the road.
Mm-hmm.
So you don't disturb that slope. That's a pretty good variance request. Again, the two hundred feet, I think we looked at generally the location of of farm buildings versus homes. It is about, you know, a three acre area um that you could build in. I think our main concern is we have mostly single-family dwellings on thirty-five acre parcels. And so without some sort of restriction on where you could build it, you're just gonna have, you know, dwellings a quarter mile apart. And is that really our intent? Is that impacting farmland?
Right.
Probably.
Right, mm-hmm.
And I think we did introduce um an allowance that if, you know, your septic system is within that two hundred foot radius and makes it. Impossible to site a dwelling, we can allow you to be as close as possible without um, you know, being on top of your septic laterals.
Mm-hmm.
So what does change things as Supervisor Merkin was saying of saying twelve hundred feet above ground?
It just be, I think we need to operate under the assumption that somebody could then convert the twelve hundred feet below ground. And to have a a twenty four hundred square foot space. And whether we want that and want to allow that or, you know, when we encounter that, I'll have to. It'll be code enforcement otherwise.
What would your objection be to it?
I again. If I I'm concerned about creating a code enforcement problem for our staff, right? Um if however, if we just allow the basement to be counted finished or unfinished, that addresses that issue.
Mm-hmm.
But again, then we're creating a pretty large dwelling. Um with a lot of living space and is that, you know, our intent with this ordinance? I didn't think it was. Um looking at the ADU requests we've received, they're typically, we've got a four hundred square foot one. Um we've got a six hundred square foot one. It just seemed like the typical requests that have been coming in are pretty small. Um we haven't been able to issue any of those. I I do wanna clarify, you can't do this now. So I think the question of will it push people farther out? No more than our current ordinance and the current restrictions are.
Right, so we you can't do it now, but the request that you've gotten to allow it. Yeah, I mean, is it possible that the reason that the only requests that you're seeing are for very small structures? It's because in general, it's not allowed. And so if it were allowed, there would be other requests coming in.
Could be, um. Yeah, the one we got last month was an attached unit. It was an apartment on attached on a home.
Mm-hmm.
Um so they did, they was just gonna be slab on grade, but then they have a doorway into the main home too to access, you know, the basement or other storage.
Is it, is it possible to um ha- just? Is it possible to press pause on this for just a little bit longer?
Sure.
What would we do?
What did you say Supervisor?
What would we do during, if we press pause, for what reason? What are you suggesting?
So that we can make a better, more informed decision, like really understand. What the impacts will be of whatever we decide. Both short term and long term. You you do, though, have some requests right now. Do you do an accessory dwelling? That are being held up by this? And those are eight hundred square feet?
That one's six hundred.
Six hundred.
Mm-hmm, how many do you have? There's the one?
Just the one. Um but we receive, you know, calls pretty frequently. I've got a whole list of folks to reach out to when this is done, who've requested in the past to do this. I think if we pushed pause, I just would want some clear direction on what other information I could bring you.
Right.
Um my biggest concern would be that we're gonna end up looking at something that's just allowing two homes per parcel. And that's a pretty big change in in how we've been doing things. And I'd really need to look at the impact of what that would do. You know, in rural areas, that kind of allowance. Um that would, that would be a larger undertaking if that's, I I guess what you want me to look into is just allowing two full-sized homes.
So does each home get a garage? Did the second home also have additional outbuildings?
Yep.
If if we're looking at two full-size, two homes per block.
Yeah, and the ADU, a garage square footage doesn't count. It could have additional accessory structures as well. So I think looking at that would be a much, a a larger work program item for us. Um to assess, you know, is our one, single-family dwelling per parcel rule? Is that something that needs to go away? What do we need to analyze if that's what we're looking at?
Does the ordinance, as is as is stated right now, grow habit agricultural land from being incorporated?
No.
No.
Um the reason for that is. I can't tell you the number of times we have other rules that work that way and and people just don't plant one year and come back the next year. Put the dwelling there.
In Boone counties, there is no size limitation or no restriction?
No, so I I did reach out and the most common type of accessory dwelling unit, which I don't consider an accessory dwelling unit. Is just an existing farmstead. And then somebody builds a larger home on the property and they consider the the historic farmstead and an accessory dwelling unit. Um that's the most, they said that's most of the requests they get. It's it's basically just allowing a second home.
I guess the other reason I'm I'm asking some of these questions is because I I also wanna make sure, you know, we talk a lot about making Story County a place people want to move to, a place people want to invest in. We wanna encourage more um uh growth, smart growth, but growth. And it's, so my longer range concern is. Creating rules that make Story County be the place you don't, you're not gonna move to because there's so many restrictions. And so I guess that's why I'm I'm asking some of these questions. It's just to get a better idea of long range, what is the impact of that?
Mm-hmm.
Um the, you know, if we have rules that say you can't do X, Y, Z. The there is, there are people who are gonna ask anyway, right? But there's a there's a larger percentage of developers development that's just gonna go, well, not there. And so we won't even, we wouldn't even know what might have come or might be coming.
Sure.
And I'm not saying this is bad, I'm I'm just kind of walking through that with you.
Yeah, I guess I'm not concerned about that in the unincorporated areas. If this was impacting our cities, sure, we could look at that. But I think a lot of the growth in housing that we're focusing on is how do we assist our cities, especially our small communities? And seeing some of that development, not necessarily in our rural areas.
I think, though, a lot of the growth in the rural areas are families that wanna come back to help family members. Or someone that's gonna buy the land because they just want to live outside the city. And those are the ones that we generally see come before us.
Yeah, again, I think if you want to include the basement square footage, um but. With language that, you know, finished or unfinished, that would prevent the main code enforcement nightmare I can see happening.
Finished or unfinished, so.
Basement square footage. Basement square footage does not count towards this size. If you wanted to do that, and we can clarify, you know, I can come up with something for a third hearing. That's fine. But I just don't want to have an expectation that you were allowing unfinished basements and then folks are gonna finish them and I'm gonna have to tell them to take out the finish.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And I don't want that.
We don't want that either.
Yeah. If, if it's a major, okay, I'm glad we had this discussion because your major concern was the code enforcement. I think we found a way to resolve.
Yeah.
But the two-hundred feet is the other issue then. Um, I know you're saying somebody can get a variance.
But only under certain circumstances.
Yeah.
It can't, it, it can't be, well, because I want the house over there next to those trees because I want to look out the window and see that sunset. It's gotta be because my septic is there or because there's some hardcore reason you cannot
Mm-hmm.
build.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, and I'm just not crazy.
And, and the purpose of the two-hundred feet?
Is to prevent fragmentation of farmland and natural areas and, and keep things within the footprint of an existing developed farmstead. I mean, most farmsteads on a thirty-five-acre piece are, are one to two acres in size. So that two-hundred square foot would cover, you know, a three-acre area that's likely already been developed and we're not impacting additional land. You know, again, from, for natural resource and ag land protection, but also just to maintain that density and, and typical development patterns we see in the rural areas.
So this accessory dwelling, as we're discussing it, could be on what size of the block?
Um, we're allowing it on lots zoned R1, R2, AR, and A1. So that's a range of twenty-five thousand square feet to thirty-five acres plus.
Exactly. Okay. Is there a way? The goal is to not is that, you know, get agricultural land used for this purpose. Is there a way? If that's the goal, to look at doing it other than the two-hundred feet? I mean, just to say, land that's currently, oh, I don't know. I guess.
Yeah.
I assume, yeah, never mind.
We did look at that and, and that's why I didn't propose that. Because, you know, we, we honestly, I have had conversations with one year. Land is in agricultural production. It didn't meet our land evaluation and site assessment scores, so they didn't plant. And.
Right. So could we expand it a little then? The, to, to four-hundred square feet? I mean, when you say that.
Square feet.
I'm sorry, feet. Feet. When you say it's three acres, I mean, yes, but but it's not actually, I mean, it does, never mind. I know what I'm trying to say, but I'm not giving a very good job. Um, could we widen it?
You could. Do you want me to look at typical sizes again? You know, would we be looking at getting into farmland with that additional distance or, or anything?
I mean, it, it might end up in farmland.
Mm-hmm.
If it's. I think what we're trying, what, what you're trying to do is get it so they're not having to go through a whole nother process than if you're going into an area that don't, doesn't meet the criteria for housing development.
Mm-hmm.
So I get what you're saying, and I thought of that before too. But then are we, are we adding a whole nother Mm-hmm. layer to go through? Because now we've exceeded, or we've gone into an area that would have to be almost like rezoned because gone to, to, we've extended it out too far.
And again, I think besides manufactured homes, the most typical ADU type we've had request it is an addition on a home, not a separate structure.
Well, there's no doubt that changing this, during this ordinance is going to allow some things that aren't being requested now because they can't be done. Um, and I am concerned about just opening a door to a lot of residential development in rural areas. Um, we want to keep the rural nature. We, that's why people move to rural areas. They want, they want, you know, and they want to have some distance. They want to be in a natural setting. And those folks could get really, you know, we, we, we want to honor that and we want those kind of areas. So I, I I, I know we're opening something up. And we're trying to figure out how to, how to keep our, keep us consistent with the goals that we have, but allow some flexibility for people. And believe me, I've seen some things happen in the unincorporated areas in the last couple of years that I have thought were really screwing some zoning ordinances and really doing things that were not consistent with rural rural living. So I'm concerned about that. I don't have the answer right now, but I, I, it, it seems like the there's gotta be, you know, we, we kind of worked through the whole idea of having, allowing the basement to be finished and not making that code enforcement issue, not putting you and your staff in a bad situation, creating an issue there. I'm wondering, I'm still trying to think of how we could do something with the two-hundred feet. And maybe, maybe it comes down to I don't know. Maybe it comes down to something in terms of guidance or goals or a, or a conditional use permit or a variance. As opposed to doing something hard and fast. Um, giving some guidance on what would be, what, like, what would be considered in, in, allowing a variance?
Mm-hmm. Um, I can't, yeah, I can't change the standards for variance because those are in state code.
You can't change what?
The standards for variance are set by state code.
Okay.
But a, a different process within the ordinance, sure. Um, right, like we built in septic system is within that area. I just, you know, we couldn't come up with besides the septic, what's, what's?
Well, what about land that hasn't been farmed in the past five years? You, you know, something like that that would prevent
Mm-hmm.
or discourage?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
Yeah. I, I'd need to think, um, through if we've got appropriate aerial imagery and all. I'd have to think about when we fly the county and make sure that the, the years lined up if we were gonna do something like that.
Mm-hmm.
To make sure we've, staff has a product we can use in making that determination. Yeah. But we could.
So what?
Hmm.
I like something like that. I think that, that really speaks to, um, yeah, not losing more ag land.
Mm-hmm. I think it's something to look at. I keep kind of going back though too, is we don't have this in place right now. So is the two-hundred feet really a detriment? Or not? We don't know.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I think it's a good point. You know, I try not to let perfect be the enemy of good a lot of the time. Happy to bring back the ADU applications we've gotten over a year and report back on, you know, did we encounter an issue with the size? Did we encounter an issue with the basement? Was the two-hundred square foot a problem? And give you a report and, and we could do a small amendment in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of unknowns. Um.
Mm-hmm. That, that is something I, I would like is, is to wherever we land to hear what, what requests you've gotten through the year and what issues have come up and um. So what was, what was the language that you were thinking of that would make the basement not a problem? I'm trying to remember how that was said.
That, um, um, the limit is twelve-hundred feet, I think you said, above ground.
Does that in? Sorry.
It's okay.
Does that include walkouts?
Yeah, I thought about that too.
Walkout basements?
Mm-hmm.
One side is at ground level.
Yeah.
But would you already go for that?
I, I, I think a walkout, I mean, no, I think I would consider a walkout a basement because what you're really talking about is a footprint.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I just want to make sure I can enforce this clearly. So could we just say including finished? Not including unfinished and finished basements?
Yes.
Okay. Um, since we are making a change, I'd like to bring this back for a third consideration with that change.
Yeah. Okay.
Mm-hmm. And something to, something then in terms of two-hundred feet or aren't you interested in that?
No, I.
Make some change there.
We need to keep, yeah. I, I think we need to find a way to make that more flexible.
Yeah. And that's.
I think for, for myself is if you can find something more flexible, if it needs more time to be reviewed, I would look at keeping the two-hundred square feet, but then saying, you know, we can look at that further. I agree, the flexibility in there, or if there's some other language. Uh, but if we want to move on this, there's gotta be kind of that cutoff point to say, okay, let's start with this.
Right.
And continue to, to figure out what else we need to tweak along the way.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It seems I would have to post this Thursday. I don't know if I'll come up with anything by then.
Right. Because it's a shorter, a shorter. But, yeah, even if we just stay with the two-hundred, right, can still revisit that.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Do you need a motion or is that enough direction for you for right now? I think we, don't we need a, a motion directing her to make the changes and bring it back for a third consideration?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So it's here. Yeah, I just didn't know if it was, I didn't know if any questions were done yet or.
Um, just a second. Are we done discussing?
If you're, I mean, I don't know. That's, that's why I didn't say anything. I, I. We're, yeah.
Okay. Of the options you have in your memo, it seems like the option four is what we're doing, actually.
It would just be, um.
It would be option two if we're asking her to bring it back on third consideration. No, but we're asking her to make changes.
With changes.
The changes. So it would be option, it would be option four. There's just a error in her memo. It says to bring back second consideration versus third.
Oh.
On option four.
Sorry. Yeah.
All the other ones say third consideration, but that one's.
No, it's saying Tuesday, January 10th is what I'm looking at.
Yeah. So the, the motion would be approval on second consideration with changes to this where footage maximum to not include finished and unfinished basements and set second, third consideration for Tuesday, January 10th.
I move that we approve ordinance three oh eight, amend in chapter eighty-five, general provisions and definitions in chapter eighty-six. This district requirements of the Story County Code of Ordinance, land development regulation to allow accessory dwellings in A1, A R, A I, A1, A R, R1 and R2 zoning districts with the changes discussed on second consideration and set third consideration for Tuesday, January 10th, two thousand twenty-three.
I, I just, did you said second consideration or third consideration?
I said and set third consideration.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that right. I seconded that. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens. Aye. Basil. Aye. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for all your work on this.
Mm-hmm. Are you? Um, additional items, discussion and consideration of appointment of supervisors as representatives for calendar year two thousand twenty-three. Um, Supervisor Merkin pointed out there's a typo on the attachment. So number four aims.
A E D C. It's different in the agenda list and on the attachment.
The agenda is correct.
Yeah. The gen, so, and I didn't get a chance to look at all of them, but I did look at the agenda items and I believe they are, they're all correct as they're listed under additional items on the agenda.
I move approval of the appointments of supervisors of representatives for calendar year two thousand twenty-three as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens. Aye. Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of resolution twenty-five dash fifty-three, two thousand twenty-three Central Iowa Regional Transportation Planning Alliance Appointment.
I move approval of resolution twenty-three dash fifty-three.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens. Aye. Basil. Aye. Discussion and consideration of bid received for Story County Human Services Center HVAC equipment replacement. Hi, Joby.
Good morning, Lauren.
Morning.
Don't mind me. Okay. I'm gonna give a little brief where we've been with this since you weren't here for bid opening with Linda. And we received one bid from Herald Pike Construction. It was for eight hundred thousand, which is a hundred and eight thousand over the most recent estimate we had for the project, which was in November of twenty-two. And it's three hundred and thirty-two thousand over what is currently budgeted for the project. So I did reach out to Curtis Pike with Herald Pike Construction. He did provide a breakdown of how they come up with their bid. So we could determine where the majority of the additional unforeseen costs. And it comes down to mechanical and electrical labor because of delays in getting equipment and workload. Most of those contractors are significantly behind on all their current projects because of equipment delays.
Hmm.
We have an example of that at our Justice Center project, which is very similar to the Human Services Center, which is a HVAC replacement. And it is currently a year behind schedule and still not complete. Looking at February of this year for it to be complete. We have received all the equipment, but it's the contractors are behind, so they don't have the workforce to
Mm-hmm.
to complete all the work that they have. So it's kind of rolled over into large labor. large labor costs. Equipment costs are about the same. Lead times are about a year. Anywhere from forty-eight to fifty-two weeks to receive the equipment, so the contractors don't want to commit to a large project unless it's beneficial cost-wise. And he, Curtis Pike even provided us with not who all the people that provided him with bids, but the next lowest mechanical contractor they received was eighty-two thousand more than the lowest that Harold Pike received to provide for this project. With that being said, at this time, I feel the appropriate thing is, is to reject Harold Pike Construction's bid. A, because we only received one bid, so we have no competitive nature to it. Um, if we rebid it exactly as it is, do I think it'll be much different? No, I don't. I don't think we'll receive more bids and I, if we do, I don't think the cost will be a lot different. So what I'm going to recommend, depending on what the three you decide today, is to change the scope of the project and then rebid it. There is some components to it that we could, facilities management could do some of the work that is currently part of the scope that went out to bid. That is a lot of the cabling. We, with the Justice Center project in-house, we pulled all the cabling for the project because we were able to. Our workload because of that project is way behind schedule. I chose to include that in the bid, not expecting the cost of that work being included to be what it is. I'm estimating that to be around a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of that eight hundred thousand that we could potentially save if we did that in-house. And then part of this project, we also tried to take into consideration some things that might come out of the space needs assessment for remodel work. So the original scope included adding two additional heat pumps and reworking some duck work on the second floor. Is that needed now? No. Could we potentially do that if it is needed later down the road? I think that that would be a wise decision to hold off on that until it is needed and because I, I can't foresee that these labor rates will stay where they're at. How long they'll be at this level? I can't answer. It's a lot of it dictates on when equipment availability gets to the point where it's not a year of lead time. So I think once that becomes better, then the labor rates will come down.
And we haven't made final decisions yet.
What's that?
We haven't made final decisions yet on the space needs study.
No.
That's one thing I was wondering about is if we delay something there or do something differently, might we be getting into work that yes, we might be redoing them?
Yeah. I mean, we looked at it in a most realistic way it would probably unfold as far as the space needs is considered to where at the time it made sense to include that work now. You know, preemptively in preparation, but given the cost it would be to do it now, I don't think it's it's worth doing the work now. It would be money better spent to do it later if it's determined we even need to do it.
Remind, I haven't looked at the list for a long time. Is there any ARPA money involved in this?
Yes, there's. It's an ARPA project originally, so call it the four hundred and sixty-eight thousand that is currently budgeted at is slated for an ARPA project.
Well, that's the.
Can we get, and can we get the, I don't think we can get this project at that cost.
Mm hmm. No.
And it's at this current cost of eight hundred thousand, it's I ha, I struggle with being able to justify that cost. Yes, the equipment is twenty-five years old and it is due to be replaced, but it's, it's at a point that, um, it's not like it's failing at a, at an alarming rate. We have about a two and a half percent failure rate right now on the equipment. We do have some equipment that is currently down and it's been down for a while because it's we've been waiting for this project to kick off instead of.
So the ARPA funds committed by end of two thousand twenty-four and expended by end of two thousand twenty-six.
Correct.
So that four hundred and sixty-eight thousand we would lose if we didn't have it done for this project. We didn't have it done by twenty-six.
Yeah. So that's why we would need to move, make a decision on it pretty quick because if we were going to not do this project and use that, then we need to earmark that we could potentially take that four hundred and sixty-eight thousand earmark for a different project. That's just my personal.
Sure. Right. So, but, yeah.
But, so, yeah, I mean, we're getting way off in the weeds, but I think what, what I would like to do is reject this current bid. We change the scope and, um, and put it out for bid again here as quickly as we can. And then I will probably have it also with an alternative that there's a rooftop unit on it that provides the fresh air and that is the big piece of equipment that we really need to replace because it is it is the big piece of inefficiency of that building because it, long story short, it brings in outdoor air, which is required on the state code requirement. But when the building was built, it wasn't required that we conditioned that air before we bring it in. So when the building was built, that piece of equipment doesn't, we don't pre-treat the outdoor air bringing it in. So as we, you can see, you know, hot humid air in the summer, frigid cold air in the winter, so it just inherently makes the building less efficient than it could be. That piece of equipment, I feel that there is, uh, the return on that investment to replace it would be less than five years. And then somebody so that we would replace it and then what needs to be replaced would be like an alternate worst case scenario. So.
So you're, you're thinking about doing this, this bid document with alternates?
Yes, with one alternate. Yeah.
One alternate. Okay.
Mm hmm.
Happen. That's.
So it may be something that could still get let and be completed by, by that.
Correct.
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah.
Yeah. But for right now, we're just deciding on whether we're going to reject this bid.
Correct. And then I will be back in front of you shortly with plan to move forward.
Great.
But I wanted to give kind of a rough idea, especially since Linda, we talked a lot about this when we opened bid and seen how much it was, but.
I appreciate you going over it again.
Right.
Bring you up to speed on it, so.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I'd make a motion that we reject the H VAC bid by, uh, Harold Pike. And, and.
Second.
Moved and seconded Edens, aye. Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
For all of your work.
Yes.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of new Story County Jail medical contract. Hi.
Morning.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for, uh, hearing us go. The Story County Jail has had a company called, uh, Men. Or, uh.
You just move it closer. It, yeah.
My bad. My bad.
And John, push the button till it's green. There you go.
Okay, there you go. Story County Sheriff's Office for, uh, has retained a company called Men, which provides jail medical services to the inmates. Anyway, this last December, we received, uh, December first, actually. First time I said last year, but we received a, um, letter from them saying that they were giving ninety day notice of ending their contract, um, for whatever reasons. But anyway, we started to, uh, research and review a few things. We involved the Story County Attorney's Office, uh, my jail staff. Alyssa was in on the final review of the bids and, um, we put out, uh, new information to hopefully get a new contract. We received, uh, we received one and we went out in search of trying to get some more comparative, uh, bids. And we received, um, word that Mary Greeley may be interested, but then that, uh, never came about. And, uh, another person was going to give a, a bid and that never materialized. So we ended up with, uh, two bids that came into this contract. And, um, we're bringing, coming before you today. And of the two, Advanced Correctional Healthcare Incorporated had submitted a bid with an annual cost of three hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. The second bid we received was from Integrative Integrated Nursing Solutions LLC for an annual cost of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, uh, dollars. So in our final review with the people that I've mentioned earlier, uh, it seemed to me anyway, and I think to everyone else, uh, considering this, that the best, um, avenue for Story County, uh, to go right now would be with the Integrated Nursing Solutions LLC. And that's a difference in the prices between the two of approximately sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. You have a breakdown of, um, of the cost and, um, I am asking that, um, the board, uh, prove that we, um, accept integrated nursing solutions moving forward. You will note that, um, we would like to start this, uh, contract as soon as possible. So we're looking at the cost, uh, extending from February through the end of this fiscal year and from March through the end of this fiscal year and what that would cost. Uh, once we enter into this contract and they would take over, then the men contract would go away and that would be, uh, so that's where that funding would be. Um, I think, uh, if I remember correctly, the men contract is approximately somewhere between two hundred and sixty and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually with, uh, costs all increasing. And, uh, the services out there, I think the best bet we could go right now, again, I say, is, uh, Integrated Nursing Solutions LLC.
What, can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Integrated Nursing Solutions, are they going to be, um, able to keep the staff that are already working in the jail?
This is one thing that, uh, I've been concerned about and, uh, that would be the intent. They would, they want to keep, uh, the staff that we have, uh, both nursing and mental health. And also, uh, would you continue to use the medical doctor that we've used for many years in, um, Story County?
Okay.
So there's a certificate of liability insurance attached from advanced correctional healthcare, but not one from integrated nursing solutions.
Mike has got another comparison he can hand out to you here to, to, that does show that in there is. That should be side by side, so you can kind of just go down. The last one.
Okay, this is a comparison. This isn't their certificate of insurance.
I'm sorry.
Close it at the bottom. I think it's.
As we, as we get into the, uh, contract negotiations with the county attorney's office, that would be a requirement that they provide a certificate of that. At this point in time, we, uh, don't have a finalized contract, but, uh, Integrated Nursing Solutions have indicated on their proposal what they would provide for those coverages. And so, uh, part of that would be getting that certificate approved prior to a signature of contract.
Okay, and can the contract mandate that they give us annual updates of that? So we always know that it's on.
You say that again, my ears are a little.
Can the contract require annual updates on the liability insurance to ensure that we know it's in effect all the time we're contracting with them?
We'll include that in negotiations.
Thank you. That's. Is there any, anything, are there any downsides to the Integrated Nursing Solutions proposal?
Is there what?
Are there any downsides to the Integrated Nursing Solutions proposal? Is there anything that gives you pause about it?
No, I, I have, uh, no concerns. Um, we know the individual and we believe we will have an excellent service provided to us.
And are there any penalties for ending with men before you start with this?
We've had communication with men, uh, because of the situation that they found themselves in. They said they would work with us, uh, at no penalty cost and would work with us to be able to get out of this as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
I don't have any. Okay.
Need a motion then?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would move that we accept a proposal or, well, not accept it. You have one, just a second. Because you haven't really done a contract yet. Okay. I would, I would, um, I'd make the motion that you review the contract and start negotiations with Integrated Nursing Solutions LLC.
Second. Moved and seconded Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good work.
Thank you for all your quick work on that.
Good work.
Sorry, John.
All right, we have no departmental reports, other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
I may have, uh, upcoming agenda item for aging resources. It's a little bit of a interesting, they have someone who applies to them to serve on their advisory board, but the Board of Supervisors from the county then has to do like a letter of support for that. So, um, I just found out about needing that at the end of last week.
Okay.
So I knew I wasn't ready to get it on for this week, so I will have something for next week.
Fantastic. Okay, um, now it's time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Saying no, and we will close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Merkin?
Sure. Um, this afternoon, several county staff are meeting with, um, some folks from Idles to talk about the drainage district wetlands projects and, um, they have a proposal for the county to help work on those to, um, get them moving. And I don't know what all the details are yet, but we've got everybody in the meeting who needs to be to figure out whether the county can, can do that. Um, tomorrow, um, I'll be attending the legislative kickoff breakfast at the Chamber of Commerce. After that, I'll be, um, as W M A Chair for Headwaters, we're meeting with the, the Chair of the Iowa Creek W M A and Conservation Staff and some other staff to talk about some possible joint planning for the future. And, uh, also have a discussion on some W M A possible legislation. Then we have, um, our joint meeting, annual meeting with, uh, with the Planning and Zoning Commission at four o'clock tomorrow. And what, Thursday night, we have mayors and supervisors. And Friday, we start talking about the budget, it looks like. Okay, and, um, I'll attend the A D C meeting at noon.
Um, and actually I just got an email on that. There is a meeting, but it is going to be via Zoom and it's going to be at eight AM.
I can do, I can do that. I'll change it to eight AM. Thank you.
Lunch surprise.
Yeah.
You want to send me the Zoom link then?
I will, I will.
Thanks. Good. And something will probably happen next Monday, too, but that's it for this week.
So I too plan on attending the legislative kickoff tomorrow morning. I have a couple of appointments in Ames and then we'll be back over for the planning and zoning, uh, joint meeting Wednesday. Uh, Thursday, uh, weather permitting, I have, uh, meeting down in Des Moines with Hirdas. So I'll be down for the morning, uh, back in the afternoon. After that meeting and then also have the mayors and supervisors meeting, have that same meeting, uh, that was just referenced, the, um, going over the budget on Friday and then on Monday, um, next week, starting all of our budget work sessions.
Yeah, I didn't want to look. I just, oh yeah, Monday is going to be a busy day.
Yeah.
Very busy day.
Yep, I've got most of, uh, many of those meetings also will be at the chamber event tomorrow morning. I have a meeting. A planning meeting for women in leadership group and, um, then a meeting with, uh, Planning and Development Department. I've got a NACO Justice and Public Safety Policy Steering Committee meeting and then the joint, um, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting tomorrow night. Um, I have an alternatives arrest diversion meeting Thursday, in addition to the mayor's meeting and budget work on Friday. And Monday. Wow. We're headed, it's a good thing this is not a busy week. Ha ha. Ha? Charge for next week. All right. Anything further?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye, we're adjourned.